Good evening, everyone. I am Margaret Smith and I am Chair of the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission, and I am calling to order the meeting of Wednesday, June 25th. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Erickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sayak.
Here.
Commissioner Bandami.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here.
And Vice Chair Birch is on her way but stuck in traffic. We hope she makes it soon.
We all do, thank you very much. Could I ask everyone to stand and join Commissioner Talisfor in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which we know is the cornerstone of our democracy. There are several ways that you can address the commission tonight in matters which are of concern to you. One thing you can do is submit any written comments about an item of interest to you on the agenda to anyone on our staff. You could have also submitted them by email prior to this meeting. Secondly, there are two opportunities for you to speak this evening. One is during what we call our verbal communication period, and that's when you would address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda but is of concern to you and you wish to bring to the attention of the commission. The second way is to spend some time addressing us this evening on an item that is on your agenda. If you're going to speak this evening, you need to fill out a speaker's card. They are behind the seat in front of you, beige. If you could fill that out before you speak, that would be helpful. And again, you can submit it to the staff on my right. If I could ask you all to silence your cellphones so that we don't hear various rings and tunes tonight as our proceedings continue. And also, when you come to the podium, I'm going to ask you to please pull the microphone right down to you so that you speak clearly, so that everyone can hear you, and also to let you know that you have three minutes to address the commission this evening. When you get down to the last 30 seconds, a yellow light will appear, and so you know that you're coming to the end, and that I'm going to adhere to, when the red light shows up, we hope you are finished. All right. Mr. Paulson, we have any written communications this evening?
We do. We have a desk item for item number three.
All right, could I ask the commissioners, have they had an opportunity to read the desk item? We see that one has not. Would you like some time, Commissioner Erickson, to read that item at some point? All right, thank you. And are there any requested continuances this evening?
No.
No requested continuances. In addition to their service on the commission, commissioners also serve on subcommittees that meet in between times, and so I would ask, are there any reports of any subcommittees this evening? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Earlier today, the Historic Preservation Committee met. We considered a property, really fronting an alley, 115 and 1/2, Wilder. They were asking for a small, or very small, addition to that cottage, which we approved. Secondly, we, again, studied the north 40 insofar as any historical ramifications of that was concerned, and we'd come, the staff had come up with some language that we would use in our report. The committee amended that language, and we think we're satisfied now with the language. It simply, at this point, since we don't have specific plans, identifies those elements of that property which could be historic, and one consideration would be what you do to preserve that, if at all. Then, under other business, and third time, I think, we considered 327 University Avenue, which is a very small addition, two pieces, and after much discussion, it was finally approved, and so we won't have a fourth time. So, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Sayak, I believe you also wanted to address us.
Yes, thank you. On July, excuse me, June 12th, the Housing Element Advisory Board met, and this board was created to provide a strategy to Town Council and Planning Commission on how to meet our regional housing allocation numbers. We did recommend a strategy that is now with staff for their draft and discussions with their counterparts in Sacramento, and we will meet again in August to finalize that and hopefully provide a recommendation that will come next to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayak. We now come to the period known as verbal communications, and I do have a card from Jeff Lockridge. If you'd like to step forward, Mr. Lockridge, identify yourself. Fix the microphone. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jeff Lockridge, 109 Paso Loro. Plan developments. Plan developments are a pretty hot topic right now. With the ongoing review of the plan development process and how PD overlay zones should be addressed in the general plan, I would suggest some sort of moratorium on granting any new plan developments until such time as the town's review is complete and some consensus has been reached. Some of the projects asking for a plan development are quite large and could have large detrimental effects on long-term planning, land use, as well as traffic. Plan developments are exceptions granted to, so that underlying zoning is either changed or circumvented. When this process provides the town with something that could be considered an excellent use of land, or otherwise results in a major town benefit, then it might be considered. But when all it does is allow a developer to build something that is questionable, is a questionable use of the land, is denser than the zoning suggests, or results in an intensification beyond what our general plan allows, it should be denied. When a development continually asks for exceptions to be able to get around our town codes, then it can't be very good for the town. There are many plan developments in Los Gatos. A few are exceptional, many more are questionable, and most fall in the category of good for the developer but not for good for the town. The town needs to stop what is surely bad, just bad, planning when it allows a plan development. A moratorium on any planned, any new plan developments or PD overlay zones should be established until the town can be sure that if a plan development is granted, it's deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockridge. I did skip over one item, and that was approval of the minutes. Do I have the commissioners had an opportunity to read the minutes, and do I have a motion? Commissioner Talisfor.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 21st, May 28th, and June 11th, 2014. And although I was excused from June 11th, I did review the minutes and view the meeting, so I feel I can vote on those minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bandami?
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. I'll now move on to the consent calendar. There is one item on the consent calendar this evening. It's Agenda Item 1, Conditional Use Permit Application U-14012. It's requesting approval to operate a martial arts studio on property located at 14107 Winchester Boulevard, Suite 0. Is there any request that the matter be removed from the consent calendar? No request. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the matter? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll make the motion to approve the matter.
Is there a second? Commissioner Sayak?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. We are also welcoming now Commissioner Birch. So, thank you for joining us. I'm sure that the trip from San Francisco was not pleasurable. Right, right. Well, we're just beginning, so thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to the Continued Public Hearings portion of our agenda, and I'll call Agenda Item 2. This is an Architecture and Site Application S-14003, requesting approval to demolish an existing single-family residence and to construct a new single-family residence on property located at 15540 Elgato Lane. May I have a show of hands of any commissioner who has revisited the subject property since our previous hearing? And are there any disclosures at this time? Seeing none. I believe we also have the desk item for this project, and Commissioner Erickson, would you like to take a moment now? Oh, it's item 3? No desk item for this one, thank you. Ms. Savage, I understand you're going to give us the report this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The project was reviewed by the Planning Commission on May 28th. The Planning Commission continued the project to allow the applicant to redesign their proposal. No redesign has been submitted, but there is a copy of the applicant's presentation for this evening in your addendum. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, let me call the applicant, and that would be Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, as the applicant, you receive five minutes this evening to address us. And again, step to the podium, pull the microphone down. You're going to do a PowerPoint presentation for us?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so let's help you set that all up. And when you see the green light, you may begin, and you know that when you see the yellow light, you're almost to the end.
Okay. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you again for the opportunity to come before you again. I have a great deal of respect for the oversight and the governance that this body sees over for the town, and again, we appreciate the continuance of our project. We left the last meeting with instructions to come back with a one-story, and after thorough consideration of our families' needs, meeting with our architect, meeting with a few appraisers, we've determined and feel very strongly that a one-story will not suit our families' needs, and would ask this body to please reconsider our initial application after the two reviews that we have already gone through, the town's architect and the amendments, and the great effort that we have gone through to meet the town's residential guidelines. I guess what's changed since our previous meeting, I think there was a lot of concern over one of the immediate neighborhoods, neighbors right next door to us at 15530, that they had not signed an approval for our project, and I'd said that the person had been out of town, and lo and behold, first week of June, she showed up and she signed, and she only asked that I put plants up against the chimney where it goes over her yard. One of the other considerations from one of the commissioners was the shadow study, and you can see down at the lower corner, this is a view into their yard from the roof of my garage, that tree of theirs will blot out any shadow that any building that I can put up will, and that doesn't quite do it justice. That whole side of the fence is nothing but the neighbor's trees that I trim back on a very regular basis. So, if we looked at approval for the project, I now have in excess of 90% of all, 100% of all of my immediate neighbors, the only people that haven't signed for approval or any unknown opposition is merely because they haven't been at the door the four times I've knocked on their doors. And again, there's the approval right there. You know, we heard a couple of things at the last meeting in terms of affordable housing, opening the floodgates, doubling our square footage, et cetera, and there didn't seem to be a concurrence on a definition for a neighborhood in transition. And I don't think we really, looking at other municipalities, there weren't really any strong definitions with Palo Alto or the County of Santa Clara either, other than, you know, talking to planners that said, "By virtue of the fact that we live in the neighborhood and the area that we do, with the business climate that we do, that in itself is the definition of transition." Again, revisiting comments from the town's architect, their sentiment among the residents and the town's deciding bodies that the gradual transition over time in scale and style to one- and two-story homes in other transitional styles is an acceptable process, then the proposed house would be a reasonable decision that would be consistent with the residential design guidelines. And that is what my wife and I have gone to great length and expense to meet, and you as the stewards of, really, the Los Gatos standard for us to meet as really infill via annexation. So, we're not asking for a variance. We are building within the FAR. We've revised our plans twice at the request of the town architect and paid very careful attention to meet all of the requirements. We have over 90% approval of our neighbors, 100% approval of our immediate neighborhood, neighbors, which is documented. We believe that the residential guidelines support our project, and we respectfully ask this commission to please reconsider our original plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant at this time? Seeing, yes, Commissioner Bandami?
At the May 28th Planning Commission hearing, your testimony included statements that you understood the decision-making process and that you were hoping for a workable decision. So, the Planning Commissioners, we all explained, you know, our decisions. In fact, we provided workable solutions, and actually, we were all supportive in your expansion and your demolition. But when I referred to Exhibit 15, what you heard at the last meeting, I'm concerned in this list here, why would you take phrases out of context and misquote us?
To which do you refer?
Well, I would say nobody said doubling your square footage should be enough.
I would paraphrase that. One of the commissioners did.
Well, I went back, and the tapes are online. You can actually review them. I don't believe anybody said that. Maybe I could be corrected, but I did review the tapes. Some of the paraphrases that you took are taken out of context. Again, we were all supportive in your efforts to expand the home. It wasn't a no, you can't do this. So, it concerns me that it was paraphrased when we were all supportive.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Seeing none, you will have a chance to come back, so if you think of anything more you want to address, you're going to have an additional three minutes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I'd like to next call Mary Pope Handy. And if I could ask if we could take down the PowerPoint while we have the other speakers? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mary Pope Handy. I live at 105 Bocchigalupi Drive, and I am a Realtor with Sereno Group in Los Gatos. I also write a blog, Live in Los Gatos, which has enabled me, given me a reason, anyway, to do some research on subdivisions. It's material for my blog, which attracts clients. So, I am familiar with a number of neighborhoods in the area, and the neighborhood that the Sullivans live in is not really just the five or six homes right next to theirs. It really is that stretch of Linda and Loma Vista, a little bit of Escobar and Elgato. And if you start at Ross Creek and come forward, the homes closest to Ross Creek are the nicest, and as you get closer to Los Gatos Almadén, they're more neglected and they're smaller and more original. So, if you have a chance, please do drive-through, and you'll see the transition that the Sullivans have referenced. It is what Realtors would call a transitional neighborhood. It's kind of a euphemism for some homes are nice and some homes are in need of work. So, it is really a classic case of a transitional neighborhood from my real estate point of view. I gave a handout, and in case you're wondering what that is, it's the sales in those streets that I would call that neighborhood. It's really three tracts, but it's one kind of unified neighborhood, and those are the sales from the last 365 days, and they represent everything that's sold that's been recorded on the MLS, the Multiple Listing Service. And I just want to draw your attention to the size and pricing difference. The home sales ran from about $900,000 to about 1.7, so a huge variance. And also, the sizes are quite diverse as well. In fact, one of the homes that was over a million at the sales price was, I think, only 889 square feet. So, you can be sure that whoever bought that is not going to keep it at 889 square feet. Just, it doesn't make sense to pay that kind of price per square foot. So, I wanted to give that to you so you could actually see the real estate data, because I think it's very important to go on the numbers. And lastly, since the Sullivans had told me that there was a mention of affordable housing, again, back to those numbers I provided, this is not going to be an affordable housing neighborhood, unfortunately. Not unless you get a builder to go in and buy a few parcels and sell it at a loss, because if you've got an 889-square-foot house going for $1 million, and the least expensive home was 900 and something, it takes a $300,000 income to support that. So, that won't be affordable housing, no matter what happens, just because of the lot size. Thank you very much for your time.
Don't leave yet. Let me see if there's any questions. Any questions for the witness? Commissioner Erickson?
So, you provided the data. What would you assume that we would conclude from the sales prices that you provided us with?
Just a couple of things. One is that it's not going to be affordable housing. It's just not possible. With the cheapest house going for $900,000, that just won't be affordable housing. So, that's the first thing. And the second thing was just the diversity of price ranges in a small area. It's really kind of the hallmark of transition, of a transitional neighborhood, because what you have are, you know, these McMansions, and then you have, you know, small 800-square-foot cottages. So, when you've got that kind of diversity, or it's so eclectic, it's a little bit almost out of bounds. So, it's a point we are in the, in the kind of the cycle of the neighborhood. Neighborhoods go through cycles, you know, new construction, stability, then usually a period of decline, and then sort of rebuilding. So, we really are in the third stage, and I think the diversity of the prices kind of points to it.
So, then you're assuming that having a variety of pricing and a variety of sizes of homes in a neighborhood is not a good thing, that ultimately all neighborhoods migrate to the highest price and the largest house?
I wouldn't say that, no. But usually, the range is a little bit smaller. So, I live in the Bellwood neighborhood, and I would say most homes, the bottom price is going to be a little over $1 million, and the top end, if you don't go into Belgatos or Surmont, which are attached, the top end is going to be about 1.5. So, you have about a 50% range of value rather than a 100% range of value. It's just a general statement of, you know, you don't normally drive down a street and see homes that are two to one unless it's a $20 million house, and there's no similar properties anywhere. Usually, they're just in a little bit tighter of a band.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bandami?
So, these are comps that are in proximity to the Sullivans? Is that correct?
Yes, they're the four streets I referenced as really being kind of the contiguous neighborhood, and there's a map on the last page. I just pulled it straight off the MLS a couple hours ago.
Because what I'm noticing out of these properties, you've listed 12, and again, we're supportive of them expanding their home. They need to have a bigger home, obviously. But 10 of the 12 that I can see are one-story homes.
Yeah, I'm not addressing that. I was just putting out there so you had a reference point on what has been selling. It's not even what is there, just what we're seeing in the sales. I could do something more comprehensive if it would be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, I would like to call Francesca Sullivan. And Francesca, I think what we're going to do is maybe we're going to pull that microphone right to you. Can Mom help you with that? There you go. Could you state your name and give us your address?
Hi, my name is Francesca, and I've lived on Los Gatos Elgato Lane ever since I was a baby, and I think if we build a two-story house, it would change my life. I think you should let us rebuild the house because our family is cramped up in there, and we would like your permission to rebuild our house. That is why I think we, that is why I think you should let us rebuild, let us build a two-story house.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for coming up here. I think you did an excellent job. All right? Thank you. So, next I'm going to call your mom, Florence Sullivan.
Thank you again for hearing us tonight. We really do appreciate it. I just wanted to recap on a couple of the points that my husband had made, just again stating that we do have the full support of our nine immediate neighbors and 90% support of the rest of the neighbors on our street. There is no known opposition for the project. We are just, we are not asking for any variances, and we're building within our FAR, and that this project meets the residential guidelines, and we'd just like to ask that you please don't discriminate against us because we live in a cluster of substandard housing right now. And basically, that's what it boils down to, is that the sequencing on our street hasn't arrived to the north end of Elgato Lane. So, we could sit there for another 20 years and hope that, you know, eventually that will happen, but we're hoping that you will, you know, consider the request. And with regards to the comments that we did take, I have to tell you that many of our neighbors that came last time were actually a little bit offended by some of the comments that were made with regards to affordable housing and those kinds of things, and that's why they decided not to come to this meeting. So, I don't feel that those were taken out of content or made to, meant in any way, you know, to offend the board or anything. We just wanted to let you know that that's what our neighbors heard, and those were the feelings that they had about it.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Sullivan? Well, let me ask one to you, and although if you want to defer, or both of you want to come up. I know we talked last time about the width of the yard and what would happen to the backyard if there was a one-story home. Can you, can you walk me through that again? Or if you want Mr. Sullivan to do it, either one is fine with me.
Yeah, so basically, right now, if we were to build a one-story, it just, it doesn't go all the way out to the end of our deck, but a two-story would potentially take a significant, more larger amount of our backyard. We would be left with a much smaller backyard. I don't have the exact dimensions to be able to answer you in detail, and I don't know.
You probably mean the reverse of that, but that's okay. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to?
Yeah, I think we have something on the deck. It's very similar to what we showed last time around, and we had Chris draw it up again. We really get within 30 feet of the fence. I think setbacks are, maximum setbacks are 25, so we're getting an extra five feet from the setback off the fence, which makes for a very small backyard when you... Let's see. There we go.
Pull the microphone. Just take it with you.
Sure.
You can just dismount it.
Thank you. So, proposed, we're about here, and that, I believe, is almost 45, 50 feet from the back of the fence, and in your materials, you might get a better look at the diagram that Chris put together. Allowing for off-street parking, so that's 10 feet, which is actually pretty narrow for doing such a thing, for, you know, anything like an RV or a truck or a boat. Be very hard to negotiate back there, so we, we had to squeeze just to get that. When we come over here, we're 30 feet off the fence. As I said before, to get, and I think some of Mary's documents may support what the Los Gatos standard is when you're building new homes, you know, unless you're building in mass density, that looks to be around 24,000 to 3,000 square feet. The challenge we have with this lot is that it's so narrow, and we have to provide off-street parking unless, you know, we were to put a big garage up front, and that's clearly not supported in the residential guideline, so the garage needs to be set back. So, that was really, you know, our conundrum, and our challenge was, can we create a house with functional utility where it doesn't look like a New Orleans shotgun, where you just go down a hall and go from room to room to room, like a motel block, so to speak, and have a tasteful home without taking up all of our backyard? So, that was the challenge that we had and why we went through so many cycles with the architect, with the appraisers and whatnot, too. We're making a big investment here in kind of an island that hopes to come along with us, you know, as a lot of the neighbors, if you read their comments, would like to do as well.
All right, so that answered my question. So, Mrs. Sullivan, you, unless you have something to add, you may be seated. So, Mrs. Sullivan, you, unless you have something to add, you may be seated. And Mr. Sullivan, you probably have a couple of more minutes if you want it. If not, if there are any questions of the Sullivans before they are seated. You're okay? All right.
Thank you again for your time.
You're welcome. So, now, I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask the commissioners if they have any comments, wish to address us. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm very supportive of what they're trying to do. My difficulty is that we know that zoning is not an election, so you don't go to your neighbors and say, "We're going to have a vote here, and then whatever my neighbors want, that'll, that'll be the outcome." That's why we have a planning commission and a town council. We also know that what may be good for the individual homeowner may not be good for the community. We have seen a number of two-story requests, and I think the neighbors would be crazy not to support a two-story request because it makes their property more valuable. So, it's like saying, "Do you want your property more valuable, or don't you?" But our question, I guess, is, do we want a town that is, that doesn't have this variety? If you look at the definition of neighborhood in our law, all of the homes in the neighborhood are one-story, definitionally. So, I'm concerned that if we always... These are good people, and they want something good, but I'm not saying they shouldn't have space. But I'm just afraid if we continually grant two stories in single-family neighborhoods, single-story neighborhoods, we won't have single-story neighborhoods. It is very expensive. But I will tell you that one of the things that affects the cost of a home is the anticipation of being able to add on to your home. It's correct. You don't buy an 800 square foot home for over a million dollars and assume that you're going to keep that. On the other hand, everybody buys their lot the way it is. And there should be no anticipation, and we shouldn't give that anticipation, that you just come in and ask for more space, and we'll give it to you. Now, that being said, I'm not against more space, but I am troubled if there's... If it's a neighborhood in transition, it will certainly be a neighborhood in transition if we put a double-story house here. Everybody will come in afterwards and said, we'll say, "You did it for them, you should do it for us." And we'll say, "Yeah, we did do that." So, I think it's a tough decision because I'm very supportive of what they would, what they would want. We did ask them to go back and come up with some suggestions, and I don't blame them. They've spent a lot of money on their plans and their architect, and they sat down and thought about it, and they said, "We don't want to do that." But I've been in this town a long time, and I've seen a lot of changes, and I would like to preserve some areas where there's a single-story neighborhood. And I will tell you that we're not doing very well at that at the moment. So, I personally feel that if we're going to have any single stories in town, this is the right place for it. So, that's my feeling.
Any other comments? I'd like to... Yes, Commissioner Seac.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. If you'd like to go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. It certainly is a difficult decision, and I think we, I think the discussion that you heard last time you were here showed that there, there is an understanding of the need that your family requires to improve the home, to require more space. I want to talk about the other side and why I see that there is a little bit more flexibility in allowing a two-story in this neighborhood. As I understand the residential design guidelines, the preservations of a lot of these one-story neighborhoods are more in keeping of the neighborhood architectural style, in that it provides a sense of character of what that is. There are certainly certain neighborhoods in town, some that are fairly close, that are very much one-story ranch-style homes, and when you put a two-story, that architectural style differs greatly from the ranch. The reason why I was thinking that it would be allowable to increase and go up in two stories with this particular neighborhood is that the architectural style in that neighborhood wasn't necessarily one that, one, our consultant had agreed was worth keeping. I think his, he was very kind in saying that it was equal alike, but not necessarily up to par of what that architectural standard is. And so, understanding that that wasn't a significant architectural style that we would necessarily want to maintain, I didn't think there was a strong reason to keep the two-story element away from that neighborhood because it wasn't necessarily going to detract from that style. So, that was one of the strongest reasons why I felt it was, it was agreeable for me at least, to go two stories. Again, understanding that once you raise that two-story element, you're certainly going to change that. But I do, you know, the flip side of that is, I do think that this would be an appropriate street to go ahead and change that, that character, that style, and that, for that reason, I thought it was allowable for them to go into a two-story.
Thank you, Commissioner Seac. Any other comments from any other commissioners? Commissioner Talisfor.
Yes, this is difficult. But we do have, and I think that I will speak to what, for me, was more, do I think this could be a two-story home? I think this could be a two-story home, perhaps, if the aesthetic design of it wasn't so out of character with your, with where your neighbors are. This house has, will have the impact of standing out and making everything else look out of character. I mean, something's going to be looking out of character, and I think that that's what spoke to me the most. Whether you, you know, modern, I think of, I think a two-story home that was designed simply, that didn't look so... I was hoping that maybe you would look at designing something that wasn't a craftsman because, to me, a craftsman doesn't fit in that neighborhood at all. I'm not so sure I would have minded the two-story or a story and a half if it had been simpler design. It could have fit in. But this strikes me as not fitting in at all. And to, here's my, my situation with transitional neighborhoods. When is that transition really going to happen? Is there a guarantee from your neighbors that they're going to start applying for, you know, renovating or remodeling their homes? I can't, I don't know that. I can't make this decision based on what your neighbors are telling me. I don't know what they're telling me. There's nothing in writing. So, for me, I can't judge it that this, I can't buy in that this could be a transitional neighborhood. However, if you wanted to be the leader and make it the transitional neighborhood, I think a design that would more blend and harmonize with your neighborhood would definitely have spoken to me, and that I could have found something in our design guidelines to go along with that. So, that's where I'm standing, and I'm not sure where that leaves us, but thank you.
Commissioner Erickson.
So, here's a bigger-picture dilemma that I have that has nothing specifically to do with the Sullivans. When we allow larger houses to go up in neighborhoods, which, and the second-story houses, to go up, the price goes up in the house. So, if we do that across the board, if we let that creep happen in the town, we, in the town, narrow the range of prices of home at a very high level. Then, we don't have residential guidelines in this town which allow small lot developments for residential, single-family homes with higher density. So, which will have the, which could have the effect to bring the price down and therefore provide a variety of access. I'm not going to use the word affordable because that has a, carries connotations with it, but we have to think about access of a range of options in the town and a range. So, we will later this evening be talking about small lot developments of single-family homes, presumably, if we get there in the agenda. So, my concern is if we continue, is similar to, I think, what is behind one of Commissioner O'Donnell's concerns. If we continue to allow all of the present homes that represent a variety of size, size is directly related to price, then, and we don't allow other options to bring the price down, then we ultimately end up essentially with an entire town that has very narrow price range that leaves out a lot of income, a lot of, a lot of income brackets in the town. So, if, anyway, so I don't, I don't know how to help us with that dilemma, and that has not anything specifically to do with the Sullivans, but it, it might suggest to us that we need to preserve neighborhoods that have smaller homes.
Any other comments? Anyone ready to make a motion? All right. Well, then, I'll make my comments. I actually would vote to approve this application, and I would base it on this specific neighborhood that it's in, the size of the lot, and the overall ambiance that we see in this neighborhood. These people have annexed themselves into Los Gatos, which means that they have subjected themselves to more stringent design guidelines, and so they have checked that box. They happen to have a very narrow lot, and I think asking them to give up their backyard for the second story is a question that, maybe it is a quality of life question, but in any case, it's one in which I would vote for the backyard on a narrow lot and going up in size. We do know that we are, we do give weight to neighbors who come out in support of a change, and however, I don't think that immediate neighbors or the neighborhood does dictate to us what we do. However, I will say this, that if the neighbors were in opposition of this plan, we would be the first ones, or at least I would be up here, to say, "Your neighbors are in opposition, and you need to go back and talk with those neighbors and work out a design plan." So, I think the neighborhood discussion, or the neighbors' discussion, is one that, that falls both ways. So, in any case, I have stated my views to my fellow commissioners, and I would like to hear from either, if I could have a motion, one way or the other. Commissioner O'Donnell, you want to add something?
I just wanted to say one thing, and that is this, that when somebody buys a lot, they buy a lot, and they know what the lot size is, they know what the neighborhood is, and the concept that we are imposing something on somebody who bought a lot that is unfair strikes me as the wrong way to look at it. If you buy a lot, and your whole neighborhood is single-story, and your lot is small and narrow, I don't even go to town and say, "Oh, my goodness, I've got a narrow lot. Is that a surprise? You bought the narrow lot." So, I just say that because it sounds like, in a way, it's our responsibility to deal with your lot, when I think, in reality, it's your responsibility to do with the lot. But that being said, I think this discussion is very good because this is a very tough question for all of us, but it does dictate how the town will be, and I have watched this go on for 40 years. And it looks like a losing battle, but it'll be interesting to see what town looks like in 20 years. In any event, I will be glad to make a motion. It's going to obviously be fairly close, I think, this evening. I don't know if Commissioner Bandami wants to say anything, or...
Make the motion, and then I'll say something.
Do you want to say something?
Make the motion, Commissioner O'Donnell. Thank you.
I will make a motion consistent with the staff recommendation, which is denial. So, I will move that we deny the application for the House as, as drawn here on the basis that we've just previously discussed.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Erickson.
I'll second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? And opposed? So, the motion is four to three. Mr. Paulson, are there appealable rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Prior to calling Agenda Item 3, I'm going to take a, just a five-minute break so that we can have any commissioners who haven't read the desk item to read it, and then we will reconvene in just five minutes for Agenda Item 3. Thank you.
By your discussion of the choices before us, that is to say, the PD versus changing the zoning to residential versus two or three things. And I was just wondering if you could explain that again. I'm, what we're being asked tonight is to approve a PD zone. The suggestion here is if we determine that that was not appropriate, we could recommend that the zoning and the general plan, I take it, be amended to be, I guess, higher density residential. If that were done, what would that do to the density of this project, if at all?
So ultimately, it would depend on what density, or what zone you decided to change that to. The reality is that this proposed project, as previously proposed, and now even more so, as currently proposed, is in between the RM five to 12 zoning designation. So it would meet that. And then you, rather than changing the general plan designation from public, you'd be changing that to medium density residential. So those are options. We, and maybe some clarification and some further discussion this evening, our understanding was, you know, with the existing two parcels that they have control over, could those be split up and zoned differently? They could. That's obviously not what the applicant's proposing. And so, you know, it is possible, but that would mean that the applicant would be basically going to counsel with the recommendation either for or against, and then depending on the designations that the commission decides to put forward. Because I know there was discussion last, at the last meeting about some commissioners may have thought residential might be more appropriate than office.
Good. One other question. This proposal, they did knock down the density, which is appreciated, and the three stories down to two stories. But there's not a lot of parking on the property, and there's not a lot of driveways on the property, and the parking demand is arguably satisfied by the two-car garages, notwithstanding that most people can't get two cars in their garage for obvious reasons. And I'm wondering if we've had any experience with this, because a lot of credence is being given to the fact that we, there's enough parking in this project. And I'm just wondering if there are no driveways to put cars into, and some have driveways and many don't. Have we had experience with any trouble with that?
Staff isn't aware of any trouble. The code obviously requires two parking spaces for each single-family residential unit. In other product types, like condominiums or apartments, you know, there's a different base parking requirement for the unit, but then there's also the potential for requiring guest parking. This proposal now, they have, look, they're proposing 96 spaces for the site, and there's 33 units, so they're at 2.9 spaces per unit, which some would think are fairly generous.
Spaces in the garages? I understand it. Plus 17 spaces that are not in garages. Is that correct?
There are also six spaces that are in driveway aprons that are long enough to accommodate parking. They meet the 18-foot depth.
But that's not including your total, is it, 96, or is it?
Yes, it is. That would include garage spaces, that would include...
That would give one homeowner four spaces.
That is correct. For three of them, yes, that's true. For three units.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
As a follow along to that question, two things, but the first one is, will there be street parking? Will there be street parking?
So there are some spaces located on the internal street, and as, looking at the applicant's plan, it looks like there are also seven spaces delineated on Capri Drive, so seven of that 96. So if you're looking at sheet C 2.1...
Okay, hang on. All right. Okay. And in fact, let me just ask, and this would go along with it at some point, but I, this using .8 or less print here is so difficult to read, even by magnifying glass couldn't see it. So I don't understa, I do not know, if you look in the first, this goes along with your answer.
Sure.
But in the first box on the left, at the very bottom...
Correct.
It says something driveway apron...
Private.
Okay, so can you repeat those to all of us?
Sure.
Because I don't know about anybody else, but I couldn't.
So the first one down there is the bottom three rows. The first one would be private driveway apron, and that is for three units that have two spaces each in the apron. Open on-site, which is 17 spaces.
Open on-site, what does that mean?
That means that they're delineated in either parallel and/or perpendicular spaces throughout the site.
And that's guest parking?
That is guest parking.
Okay.
And then the last is the Capri on-street spaces, which are delineated with the dash marks on Capri Drive, and that's seven.
Okay, on, that's seven. Okay, so isn't that just neighborhood parking?
That is, that is on-street parking.
So how can that be included as their guest parking?
Well, that, A, they're not required to have guest parking...
Okay.
For single-family units, but they're proposing these, the commission could decide not to count those, and then I can do the tabulation to see where they're at from a parking perspective.
Okay.
Typically, we don't count those, but they are showing those as counted on the site.
So then my, my other question that I asked is, there are private drives here, right, between the homes?
Correct.
Will there be any street parking allowed on these streets that are not in the 17 guest parking numbers? Do you see what I'm saying? Can you park on the streets, parallel park?
You can in certain locations. So let's start at Capri. So see the Capri entrance?
Yep.
There's that first bubbled area next to Lot G.
Yes.
There are four parking spaces in there. If you continue up the road, there are three parallel spaces in that little duck out there with the same bubbling. And then if you come around and go down towards where Knoll's, the Knoll's entrance is, along the right side there, it's hard to see, and that's one, two, three, four, five, six, looks like seven spaces there. And then if you go left and along Knoll's Drive in between Lot 32 and 33, there's three, there's three parking spaces there that are perpendicular that you'll see.
And then also down at the very end of the private drive of Lot, near Lot A, which is adjacent to the other development? Is that parking as well?
No, so all of the bubbling is not necessarily parking. I think that's also a delineation for probably C3 compliance.
Okay, and so we're, the ones you just read to us...
Yes.
Those are not included in the 17 guest parking?
Those are the 17, those are the 17 spaces.
All right.
So I can add...
In other words, so you didn't answer my question. There's no other parking on streets other than what you just read out to us.
Correct, not in the development.
So Mr. Cannon had an issue with parking. Let me get this.
In which letter are you referring to, the latest or the...
Yeah, his latest on June 20th, and it was the guest park paving, and it says, "The paving at the guest parking space nearest Capri Drive is larger than a one-car space and smaller than needed for two cars."
And so that was him reading it in error. It's actually four spaces. He thought they were perpendicular.
Okay.
Or, sorry, parallel, but they're actually perpendicular, so there's four spaces.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Paulson, I just want to make a side comment to you. I'm very glad you mentioned the story polls, because when I was out there, I was sure that those story polls had not moved, but I did get the memo that they had, so I feel better that you clarified that this evening. So thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's open the public portion of the public hearing, and I'm going to call Mr. Tursini, who is the applicant. Mr. Tursini, I know you know, but I'll just repeat it to you. You have five minutes. Please pull the microphone down to you. If you're going to step away at all, you can take the microphone with you. Identify yourself. Thank you, welcome.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. First of all, I want to apologize for the story polls not being modified. I was promised, like several of us here in the audience get promised by a contractor to do something, and after repeated promises, did not perform, and that disappoints me. It puts a bad name to the general contractors in the valley here. I come from a contracting family, so I apologize for that. I did want to walk through tonight the changes that we have made to the project, and we started off afterward, the May 14th Planning Commission meeting, setting up a meeting directly with the consulting architect here in the town hall, along with our project architect, Don Ruth Roth, Dolan Group, actually, Lori Felberg was in attendance in that particular meeting, Pete Smith's office, Charles Davidson, our civil engineer, Beverly Bryant, and myself, along with Joel Paulson and, at the time, Susanna Avila. And the primary purpose of that meeting was to go over in great detail the comments that were made by the planning commissioner. We transcribed that, I know you can watch it, we not only watched the tape, but we transcribed the individual comments made by the general public and those that were made by the commission that evening. In addition to that, we wanted to go directly over each comment that Mr. Cannon had made on the project, and started off even with the dialogue of, is three-story appropriate for this location, given that we are in a neighborhood with multifamily housing, and a multifamily housing project immediately behind the, this site referred to as Villa Vasona, that's in the 40 unit to the acre, and we also have Villa Capri that's in the mid-high 20 units to the acre. And Mr. Cannon was not opposed to three-story. I think he was opposed to the type of design that we were proposing, and I made a judgment call. And the judgment call at the time was, I think we could continue to work towards a three-story design that I would be comfortable with, and Mr. Cannon may be comfortable with, but I wasn't convinced that the commission, at this stage of the game, would be comfortable with going forward with the three-story products that we, we did reduce the homes to two-story, all two-story. It did have a substantial impact in our project density, and I think there are some commissioners that maybe suggested that if we were to lose units, would we consider basements as, or cellars, excuse me, for the, for this particular product type. We have evaluated that. At this stage of the game, we have not opted to go forward with, with cellars. It's kind of weighing the costs associated with constructing the cellar space and the marketability of that cellar space, and that's something that we're, we're still evaluating, and it's something that doesn't count to the overall square footage of the home, and it, if that makes sense to do that, that's something we would like to consider. But what we did is go through and make some, several key changes to the, to the project. And we started off with the Capri interface, and there was a suggestion on moving our setbacks along Capri to provide as much as 15 feet of setback off of Capri. And we were able to accomplish that, and it's shown here on the, on the site plan in this location here, excuse me. And the, the second major change that we made was to reduce all three-story homes to two-story. Those three-story homes were in the interior of the, of the site in this location here. In addition to that, we, we added a second common open space. There were some questions with respect to where would the children play, and is that appropriate to have a site that doesn't have an area for, for, for children to play if this is going to be a family-oriented development? So we kept the community garden space. We've modified the community gardens. It's a little bit smaller than what we originally proposed, but we added this lot here for both the children's play and an area for people to seat and have some shaded area. So, and I'd like to be able to go through, and we have the project architect here tonight, Don Ruth Roth, art landscape architect Paul Reed, Laura Forbes, who did our environmental work, and Frederick Ventor, that actually did our traffic engineering as well. I brought the team here tonight to be able to address any further questions that you have, those questions that I can't answer, because I know the project architect, consulting architect, had some comments, and I'd be prepared to address those directly this evening. Thank you.
So, Mr. Tursini, I am going to stop you now, as you know, and we're going to see if there's any questions for you from any of the commissioners, and seeing none, we will continue, oh, Mr. Commissioner O'Donnell has one.
You heard, I raised a couple of questions, but one question that I'd like to address to you. The parking, I mean, I would not be inclined to count the seven parking spots on a public street, so get that out of the way, but many of these units do not have driveways. Those that do, apparently, we count four parking spaces, two in the garage and two in, two in the driveway. One wonders about that, but are you, I guess I'm concerned that if, when this fills, there are going to be cars spilling out into the street, and that street may be hard to find parking, I guess I'm saying, I don't know. But what has been your experience with handling the parking situation the way you're proposing here?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner O'Donnell, and I want to be very clear, that each home does have a two-car garage, and I know there's concern about, a lot of people don't park cars in the garage. This will have a homeowners association, and in that homeowners association, it's very easy to, to require that the homes, you know, that cars be parked in the garage. And in addition to that, we do have 17 stalls within the site, and we don't need to count the seven stalls that are on, on Capri. Our civil engineer, Pete Smith's office, they, they put those there just to kind of designate that we, there is an opportunity to provide off-street parking, but I'm very comfortable with the 17 stalls that we have. Few of the homes do allow for parking in the driveway for guest stalls, but I believe we have more than adequate parking for this particular project.
The homeowners association could require... As presently, I don't know if you've drafted them yet or not, but do you intend to require that?
That is correct. I, I think it makes a lot of sense to do that. We, it's, it's the same type of thing of not allowing motorhomes to be parked in, into a project like this. It's, they're, they've become an eyesore, and it's not a place for people to park. It, it's, it's, it's just more of a housekeeping, and it doesn't, it doesn't detract from a sale of a project to have that in there. It provides the homeowners additional opportunity to, to work together if there is a homeowner that is not abiding by that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sayak.
Thank you, Mr. Tursini. I have two questions. One is very general, and one's very specific. The specific one, looking at page C41, I'm trying to distinguish the, which is your landscaping versus your bio-retention. Someone mentioned that the print was rather small, and I can't really distinguish it based on what you have here. So the question is, is your landscaped areas what you're planning to use for bio-retention to meet C3 requirements, or am I just not seeing it?
I would like Pete Smith from Charles Davidson's office to answer that, if you would like.
Okay.
I would have him bring up, because he, he was involved with preparing the C3 requirements.
That'd be great, thank you.
And then, sir, you need to identify yourself and also fill out a card for me before you leave this evening.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Pete Smith. I'm Charles Davidson Company Civil Engineering. I agree the font is too small. I used to be able to read that kind of stuff, but not anymore. We have a combination of C3 treatment areas. We have infiltration in the parking stalls where you see the bubbling, so those are infiltration trenches that are, have been used elsewhere in Los Gatos. We also have bio-retention. It's really just a depressed area, so it will be landscaped with appropriate types of planting that are in, that can handle the kind of water that stands there, but it is a landscaped bio-retention pond. Pond is not a really good word, but detention area.
And, okay, so you're pointing to the top corner, top right corner, TCM 10?
Yep.
So that square, then, that would be an example of where you'd plan to do some, oh, I see, I see the difference in markings now.
Yeah.
Okay, and so you have those just all over throughout, and then you're also planning to use the trenches?
Typically, the bio-retention depressions are used to capture the runoff from the roofs of the buildings, and the infiltration trenches are picking up the runoff from the streets and treating it in that manner. So there's a lot more of the small bio-retentions to kind of capture, capture all the roof runoff.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
And then, Mr. Tursini, if I may, through the chair, my general question now. You heard the discussion last time we met about, I think, my hesitation on using the plan development overlay, and then one of the options that was suggested today through the staff report was, was changing it to, instead of an R1Aid, an R1, basically rezoning it to medium-density residential versus plan development. So, can you give me your thoughts why that isn't the route you and your team were moving towards, instead of going with the plan development?
Very much I can address that. We did look at bringing to the general plan committee the idea of converting and going straight to a residential development, because I had a desire to build the project as residential. I think the general planning committee wanted to keep the flexibility in the event that I didn't close on the property, and therefore, it still had the office designation with the housing being allowed under that office designation. I didn't protest that particular decision. I could understand that very clearly. We do intend to close with, with the county. We are under contract to close with them, and so the designation for the medium-density would be one that we would go for, and at this stage, we are, under the calculations, the town calculations, we're at 8.6, eight units to the acre, and that's the 29 market-rate units and the four BMPs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tursini, I actually have a question. Can you, I'm looking at C21, but it doesn't matter, you can just look at what's up on the screen now. Can you point out for me about the raised bed gardens and the play area again? Can you point that out?
Sure. Let me see if I can find my pointer. Right, the newly added areas in this location here, and Paul has, Paul Reed has a very detailed, you know, plan for this area with some seating, with a covered terrace area and then an active play area right in here. The raised...
Is that, just for clarification, is that Lot 14 or Lot H?
It's Lot H.
H, okay.
Yes. And in this area here, between the front entrances of these units in this cluster, we have the raised planter beds here with a walkway that goes around, and then in between the planter beds would be a crushed granite material, so there's easy access to those planter beds.
So Lot J and H, and then is there anything on the rest of the parcel?
No, other than the, the private open space.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor and Commissioner Bandami.
Thank you. Thank you for all of this. It's, it's, it's a lot, but it was great reading what I did read. So our intention of our redirection last, at the last meeting, was for a reduction in density and massing. So what I wanted to ask you, and what I noticed, is that you did reduce the height. You took off the third floor of living space, and I wanted to thank you for that. But my question for you is, what is the total housing footprint of today's proposal versus what your total housing footprint was of the last proposal? Does that make, do you understand what I'm saying? And I'm referring to the building and driveway footprints.
C2...
A C21. And maybe you can't answer that, and your architect could, or...
Well, we, we do have a calculation for that, and, and I'm not recalling it right off the top of my head, but we can find that particular exhibit and, and show you exactly what that would be. Thank you. The total building and driveway footprint area is totals on the site, 47,808 square feet.
And that's today, that's today's...
That is correct.
So what was the former?
And that's what I was hoping that my gentleman that disposses up to me would have had that particular answer, because I don't know what that is. I don't know if Mr. Paulson may have that information.
I do have that information. So the previous plans, it was 47,853, so the footprints of the, of the new homes have increased, that garage footprint and building footprint has increased with the 33 units, so the coverage is similar.
It's similar? My calculation was you probably came down about 45 square feet.
And that sounds about right to me.
All right, well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bandami.
Larry Cannon talks extensively about the look and feel of Los Gatos for us in making our decision. So can you explain to me how a 10-foot separation between almost 30-feet-high buildings on approximately 2,600 square feet lots meets the look and feel of Los Gatos?
Yes, I can. And, and what I'm going to say is, is that it's a, it's a product type, and it's a small lot product type. Mr. Cannon does refer to a couple of projects that were built along Los Gatos Boulevard that were craftsman-style homes with similar side and rear setbacks. When we looked at this area in particular, we did not opt for a craftsman-style home. We felt that the surrounding community, the shopping center, the Vasona Shopping Center, the medical offices, buildings across the way and in behind us, and the housing directly across the street, were not in a craftsman style. So the, the style itself, and the Dolan Group came up with this particular type housing unit to really blend in with, with the existing neighborhood. When you get to the setback questions, and do I believe this is commensurate with, with the community, we are in a neighborhood that has multifamily housing, so we have buildings that are connected and no separation between them, and actually exceed the height that we are proposing, and our homes will range in height from a low of 26 feet to as much as 28 feet, and we might even have a couple of elevations that are down as low at 24, but it's 26 to 28 feet. In the immediate neighborhood, we have homes or condominium units that are built to in excess of 30 feet in height. So my answer to your question is, I believe that this product type fits well within the fabric of that, of the neighborhood, being multifamily and single-family detached, and it is a product type that we're proposing, that the town has looked at in the past, and I think it's something that will be taking place in the future for, for the town. We believe it's a perfect location for, because of its location to transit, but more importantly, location to jobs, and without the impact to the Los Gatos schools, which I know is very important. So we have Campbell School Districts. It's an ideal area to provide more density. That's why I was reluctant to reduce the density, because I believe that the density is appropriate here. But we have done that, made that decision to move forward, and that's what we have before you this evening.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Tursini, if you would like to have a seat, and you can be thinking about anything that you'd like to bring to our attention when you come back, and we do have another speaker, and that's Jeff Lockridge. Mr. Lockridge, if you could step forward, identify yourself, and you have three minutes to address us.
My name is Jeff Lockridge, 109 Paseo Laura. So my question is, is the development at 375 Knoll's the best use of that land? The developer wants to change the zoning... The developer wants to change the zoning from office to office PD, a change or an exception to our zoning. The density seemed to be based on leaving the circulation roadway in the formula. The proposed density of 8.68 would jump, would actually jump to around 13 if those roadways were removed from the equation. The development just has too many units to be able to allow proper traffic circulation, as well as providing both public and private open space and require setbacks as well as parking. They are requesting exceptions to lot sizes, front, rear, side, as well as street setbacks. The amount of these exceptions are typically in the range of 30% to 50% of the minimum requirement. For example, the required lot size is 8,000 square feet compared to what is being asked as an exception of 2,600 square feet, 43% of the minimum. The required front setback is 25 feet compared to what is being asked as an exception of 7 to 8 feet, 33% of the minimum. The required rear setback is 20 feet compared to what is being asked as an exception of 3 to 10 feet, 15% to 50% of the minimum. The required side setback is 10 feet compared to what is being asked as an exception of 3 to 5 feet, 30 to 50% of the minimum. It's unclear to me what the square footage of the common open space is, as well as the square footage of open space per unit, from what I could tell off the plans. So, as far as I'm concerned, the development at 375 Knolls asks for way too many exceptions and should be denied in its present form.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lockridge? Seeing none, you may have a seat. I'd like to call Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. I think last time I indicated that I thought the order of, your discussion and determination should follow what I have up there. And I've also put up the averages, minimums that Jeff Lockridge just talked about. When looking at this project, it seems reasonable. 8.8 acres of dwelling units per acre, 40% open space between the common areas and the private yards, 35% of the project lot coverage, although the table on C21 says 52%. That all seems pretty reasonable, except that, when you look at it maybe a different way. Excuse me. Oops, there we go. It's 8.8 dwelling units per acre, if you don't take out the 0.83 acres, I believe, that goes to the driveways and to the private circulation. If you do take that out, it's more like 12-plus units per acre. And those would be the lot sizes if you didn't consider anything else. But more interesting is, if you look at what that means in terms of FAR. Not taking out the circulation, it's a .71 FAR on average. Taking out the circulation is an average of .88 FAR. FAR is pretty good, one of the things that can give an indication of the intensity of a site. That compares with Bluebird Lane, which is in the range of .52 or 3 or 4 FAR. So that's one concern I have. I think that this project is too intense, whether or not it's two or three stories. And what you consider the density, I don't know. And the appropriate use could, in my opinion, could be either office or residential. If it's residential, you have to, shoot, I haven't even gotten near what I was going to do. If it's residential, you have to consider both the density and the intensity. The density alone doesn't give you that information. And then, when you get to site and architecture and also intensity, it's the question of what is the correct product type if you're going to recommend residential? Would a multifamily unit provide better open space? This does not seem to have excellence or maximum open space or excellence in architectural design or site design.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Would you again discuss a little bit, if you contrast the proposal now versus residential with a density, let's say, of 12? I think you were discussing with us similar to.
It's the same project. It's just the way you look at it. A normal subdivision, if it were this size of a lot, and it was subdivided as a normal subdivision, you wouldn't, you would take out the street access or the private roads. In this case, they don't call it a private road. They call it a private drive. But the main private drive, in essence, is a road, because it goes in one end of the project and goes out the other end of the project. So it's a matter of perception. And it sounds like it's not very dense when you say 8.8, but it is much denser when you actually consider the land available to build on and the amount of open space. It looks pretty good on paper, but some of the open space that's being considered as private open space is on the side yards. And in Plan One, it's everything except the sidewalks and the actual building footprint. And so, there's a lot of open space that really isn't usable, even though it looks pretty good when you see it on a list.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. You can have a seat now. Mr. Tursini, you are entitled to an additional three minutes. If there's anything more you would like to share with the commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I did want to address the commission with the concept of the product type again. It is a housing type that's desired by a number of working couples. And it's, it's an excellent lifestyle choice to make versus a common-wall development. And I think I touched on that before. We believe this location, because of its proximity to Highway 85. I was out there earlier this afternoon and, you know, observed the Albright development. It's coming forward. And that development will generate jobs. Those jobs, it could be as many as 2,000 jobs generated in that, in that project. And I was thinking, what better way to address those jobs? Keep the people in Los Gatos versus getting on the freeway and heading to Mountain View or Sunnyvale or other communities that are embracing this product type? Because it is a product type that the Bay Area is utilizing as an alternative to stacked flats or townhomes. So, I look at this as, as an opportunity. We believe it's going to be a very nice community with its own private open space, but fantastic proximity to the Creek Trail, the Los Gatos Creek Trail. We have Fisher Park, which is a mile away by bike ride, an easy bike ride for families. And even the opportunity to get on the Los Gatos Creek Trail and ride to Vizona Park, which is less than two and a half miles away from this project site. So, I believe it's a fantastic location. We haven't even touched on the convenience of the shopping, the convenience of the medical. What the Bay Area is experiencing right now is a huge job growth. And with that job growth, we're seeing the traffic on 85, 237, 101, 280. This is an opportunity to provide needed housing in the community that has minimal amount of impact to the schools and has all the conveniences one would want when you're, when you're raising a family or living on your own. So, that's what I'm proposing that we, we move forward. And I appreciate the commission's favorable consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Tursini, don't leave, because we have some more questions. Commissioner Talisfor and then Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the explanation of the product type. Can you bring up that last illustration you had that showed the product type?
Sure. Would you like to see an elevation of the, of the units or the site plan?
But a plan, site plan would be fine. It's, that's not the picture. I don't know which picture it was, but it, it had purple on it.
Oh, the drawing.
The drawing.
Next one.
Now, it might understand, clearing up, so the 33 structures that you're building are not all individual homes?
They are individual homes.
Oh, now, they are. So you were mentioning condominiums. What did I misunderstand?
What I, what I was suggesting is that immediately to our, south of the project, southwest of the project is Villa Vizona, which is a multifamily project here. We have an office development immediately to our north. And then, we have the Villa Capri project in this location over here. So, I'm suggesting that this project fits in quite well with the, with the surrounding densities.
Okay. And then, just in general, Mr. Cannon, in his June 20th report, made several suggestions and recommendations to you. Have those been incorporated into your plans?
They have not, but I'm, I'm prepared to address those this evening. And I can walk right through those fairly quickly. We have had an opportunity, we being the landscape architect, myself, and the Dahlin Group, to go through those, those comments. And I believe we can address each one. I, I have them to memory, and I can, if we can go back to the site plan, Jennifer. Mr. Cannon made a suggestion. He was, you were commenting about the parking stalls right here. There are four parking stalls. Mr. Cannon was trying to see if we can incorporate some additional landscape area here. Mr. Reed and I talked about that. There's an opportunity. What we try to do is try to keep an area for the car, for the overhang on the car. And there's an opportunity to introduce some additional landscape right in the front of this parking stall here, low landscaping, the ground cover, that can provide some additional greenscape that won't impact the movement in and out of those, those parking stalls. So that's, that's one area that Mr. Cannon addressed. The other area that Mr. Cannon addressed was at the end of the drives themselves, whether or not we can have a featured element here. And Mr. Reed and I have discussed that. There is a perfect opportunity along the, on the fence itself to put a trellis. So we could either do a climbing vine or some specimen tree here at the end of these drive courts and down in this location over here. Mr. Cannon also suggesting that the fence here versus a common six-foot-high wood fence in this location over here, if that could be done in a decorative material. Mr. Reed brought this evening some photographs of some fencing types that we would consider. And there's one in particular that we like that has an opportunity to introduce a vine growth or even a tree located along that, that fence to, to help that out. So there's, there is an opportunity to do that. Mr. Cannon also suggests that he's still somewhat concerned about our window and the window treatment. I discussed this directly with our window supplier, whether or not we go with a Milgard window or we go with a Marvin window. And Marvin windows are very high-end, very expensive window. These units can be framed in a 2-by-6 perimeter wall. And with it, and most likely, that's the way we will go. With that 2-by-6 perimeter wall, we can set the window back in there and recess that window back in, and along with the additional trim detailing that the Dahlin Group is providing on this elevation. My own window supplier, being in the business as long as he's been, and this Bruce Bauer lumber, they've been around in Sunnyvale for many, many years. His comment to me is, I can't tell the difference between a Marvin window and a Milgard window when it's done with that type of, with that type of detailing. So what we would like to do is propose to spend time with the staff and work on the, the actual detail of that particular window. This evening, I brought a couple of shutters as a sample product there, because I felt that there might be some questions of whether or not we're going to be using a wood shutter or a composite material. And I brought a couple, I brought one wood and I brought one composite to, to take a look at. When I'm standing a two feet away from that, I can't tell if it's wood or composite. There are, they have wood grain. They can be smooth. It's depending on the type of finish that you want to have on that particular detail. But we're providing that, not for a cost differential, it's for the maintenance. It's the long-term maintenance of those, that product. And the composite material will last quite a bit longer than, than the wood and quite a bit less maintenance for the homeowner long-term. But it isn't a cost saving. So I could stand here and I could say, we could provide wood shutters. That's not the issue for us. We're, we're not combating that. I think Mr. Cannon also had some questions on the actual elevations. We did a kind of a before and after photograph of those elevations. And Don Ruthoff is here this evening. If you'd like, I can have him walk through those modifications that we, we have made and how we might address Mr. Cannon's further comments with respect to the detailing that we are proposing for, for the homes this evening. So that's, that's what I, I have. Is there anything else that you might have?
And for me, the open space, what is the size of that play yard?
It would be approximately 3,000 square feet.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to see the elevation changes, modifications?
Sure.
And the fencing?
Great. We do. Let me start off with the fencing. I think that's an easier one to address. Paul, can you bring that up, please?
Mr. Tursini, is that something that you can put on the screen for us? And then, sir, if you can identify yourself and just know you'll fill out a card before you leave this evening.
I've turned one in already.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Paul Reed with Reed Associates Landscape Architecture. My office is at 477 South Tafe in Sunnyvale. The picture that I have up on the screen right now is a picture of what we would propose at the end of the driveways as an accent. And in the center portion here, we would have an accent, a flowering accent, a small tree. Or we could have a pot with a flowering accent shrub in it. But the, and also, the trellis could be a contrasting color to the fence. But it would be an, an accent focal point that would fit within the space that we have. I'm just going to put up some other details that are optional wood fences that, to address the consulting architects' ideas of upgrading the fences. So, we're not tied into any particular one fence yet, but these are just some different ideas that we could, we could do. The fences that were in the, in the June 20th Consulting Architects' report showed white painted fences. My preference would be to go with a fence that was, that had a semi-transparent stain on it instead of a, instead of a painted wood fence, because a painted wood fence is something that requires a lot of maintenance. And we could either use a semi-transparent stain or a solid body stain. And it would be much easier to, to maintain the color and keep it looking fresh without a lot of maintenance on that. But we're open to doing different detailing on the fences to come up with something that, that would be suitable for the city.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. And seeing no other questions of, do you have a question, Mr. Reed? Okay, so, we're going to ask the applicant. Okay. I think that Commissioner O'Donnell, you maybe was, were next. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Cheers.
Sir, can you identify yourself as well?
I have the reverse problem. It's always too low. Good evening, commissioners. Don Ruthoff, Dolan Group Architects. Pleasure to be before you again. And I do have a card in, so we can cover that.
And, and what are you addressing for us this evening?
I'll just quickly run through just kind of the, the couple of changes we've made to the architecture to address.
And are you addressing Commissioner Talisfor's question of elevation?
Yes.
All right. I just want to be specific for the record. Thank you.
That's fine. There we go. So as we talked about the elevation, so you'll see in these comparatives, on the bottom is what the previous architecture was, on the top is kind of what we've done to make changes. One of the concerns was, in the, in the original design, these houses, of course, are challenging because they're narrowing width. So you, we have, there's a requirement in the guidelines to have as much frontage as possible to minimize the garage door. So what we've done is we've pulled the entry forward to in plain with the garage door and actually come past it. So we've recessed the garage door behind this. Can we go actually, I don't remember if it's one before this or one after it. Sorry, it's the other way. One more. There you go. Shows up a little bit better on this particular elevation, the same house, different elevation. You'll notice that this becomes quite a large feature. The garage door itself gets pushed back about five, two, three feet behind the face of the building. Do you have those pictures, the, the very first sheet? That these, oh, they don't show up too well. So this is, this is a similar idea, not exactly the same, little bit different context. But you can see here how this, the architecture becomes in front of the garage door in this case. So it pushes the garage back off the facade to better meet the guidelines and, and kind of the direction of, of the Los Gatos setup. So here you can see that you have, the, the entry by coming forward becomes much more prominent, much more obvious, where we would have normally had this setback. Mr. Cannon talks about it being enclosed by walls. It's, it's really, I look at it as creating an outdoor foyer, if you will. You come into, through a gate, so you have an entry element, then you go on into the house. And so you, you get that feeling of entry. It's just in a different way than actually having the front door just paste on the face. You get, still have a front porch, but it still feels more like a front door. And that's kind of what we were trying to address there. He makes some other comments, and they're all really minor. I don't see a problem addressing any of them in any. He talks about, there's a small curve on, on this. You know, it's funny, when you, when you look at things over again, that curve actually got left over from this. You notice we pulled this stone from this face and brought it out to the front to make it much more expressive, which is following the guidelines. And so, you know, maybe here, instead we should, instead of just having this small curve, we should, you know, add a trim and actually celebrate the, the opening a little bit better. So all those things, I don't see a problem addressing as we kind of go forward with staff. I, I think, you know, that he talks about a little more forehead at the arches. Those are all pretty minor little pickup things that we can do. We just haven't quite had a chance to do that since his letter came out.
So in addressing the windows again, with the arches that he does specify in Plan Three.
On the Plan Three?
But I've seen them in other, where, is Plan Three up there?
Right there. Well, it's actually one more. Was the specific one he was talking, he was talking about this right here, where the, where the arch kind of tucks up under the edge of the eve. And that's, that's very easy to pull down. These are sat up at eight feet. We can pull them down to seven feet and get a nice head above that.
So I see the same thing going on with the other windows that are going up into the eaves? Is that something that can be altered as well? It looks a little awkward.
So what you see here actually is, there is a foam, there's a trim piece under the eve that creates the head of these windows. And that is an intentional thing. We certainly could, we can change that approach. That's not, that's again, a detail thing. I just, I sometimes, so I don't always do that if you go one either direction, doesn't matter. You can see in this case, there's no, there's no eve trim here, but you get a, you end up with a head trim on the window. So in the other case, I used the, kind of the eve cornice to create the head of the window. If that's something that is not preferable, you know, we can certainly address that.
Right, so.
Personally, I think it looks awkward, but.
Commissioner Talisfor, I think we've pretty much completed your, your questions, yes.
I think he's gone through the.
Elevation, right. Commissioner O'Donnell, and then we're going to go right down the line.
Thank you very much.
You want to speak to the applicant, correct? Yes, all right.
Guess I should turn my mic on. I'm interested in Exhibits twenty-six and twenty-seven. One is the Bluebird Development. It shows the FAR of, well, shows a net of point five nine and a gross of point five two. And then if you look at Exhibit twenty-seven, which is Laurel Muse, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have, at least I don't see the FAR calculated as it was on the other project they did. Do you, do you have any knowledge or understanding of what the FAR is for the Laurel Muse?
The short answer is, no, I don't. I'm familiar with, with both projects, but I don't know those floor areas.
Well, Laurel Muse, in my observation, seems to be, have less, actually, less FAR. Is why I want to say that. No, has, yeah, less FAR. It's, it's more dense, I believe, than, than Bluebird. And there have been a lot of concerns about the appearance of Laurel Muse insofar as the density is concerned. And I'm, what I'm interested in is, Bluebird has a fair share of units, eighteen, I guess it is, eighteen lots. And it only has essentially fifty-nine or fifty-two percent FAR. The numbers that we saw from two of our speakers were so much higher on the FAR. And I'm wondering how you were, realize that FAR is not the end of the question, but it is certainly a beginning of a question. And I'm wondering how you would respond to a criticism of your proposal as being too dense because of the FAR.
Sure. I'm happy to address that. And I, I don't study project densities. What we'd look at, when we're looking at a site, we, we design the product to, to the site. And so my critique of Laurel Muse is that you have units that are along Los Gatos Boulevard that are the back of the units and not the front door of those units. They're fine. I, I don't have a, an issue, but that's what you see. So what we have on Capri is we have units that front out onto Capri. And that was an earlier comment from Mr. Cannon when we were looking at one time, internalizing our front door entrance. And along Knowles, we have a single unit that fronts on to Knowles. So it's very welcoming to, to Knowles. And, and so I, I believe that's, kind of addresses some of the density. When I look at the Craftsman style and it's, Mr. Robson does a wonderful job developing. I, this is not a criticism at all of, of his developments. But when I drive and I look, I see a lot of roof in those plans. It's just inherent with that particular product type. A lot of people like that. To me, that is what you see when you're, when you're driving by that project. And what I like about the product type that we're looking at is, is the, we're looking at elevations with, with stone and with treatments. And we're, we're de-emphasizing the roofs. We have very minimum roof pitch, four and twelve is a very minimum roof pitch. They are just different product type. I, I'm not opposed to, to either of those projects, being a town resident, driving by those. The, the Bluebird project, to me, it reads quite well. It's a, it's a, it's a very nice project. Laurel Muse has its own. It doesn't bother me. I, I look at it from the standpoint that those work. One of the things that, that's taking place is that you do have some landscaping. Landscaping starts off very immature in its, in its size and height and growth pattern. Takes a while for that to mature. And I think as that landscaping matures along the Los Gatos Boulevard, you'll have less of that feeling of those homes and seeing those homes as, to the, to the street as they appear today. I thought there might be some questions with respect to our interface and our surrounding properties and, and our landscaping. And I, I meant to bring tonight, and I should have, that Paul Reed designed my landscaping in my own home. I've been in my home for ten years. And when I first moved in, I could see my neighboring property is, is clear as day. And their second-story windows would look down because that site is, is elevated from, from our home. In less than five years, that was a, an issue that is no longer a concern of ours as far as the privacy issues. And now at ten years, we're trimming those trees down because they're getting to a height now that is, is, is too much. And so we have no visibility of the, of the homes. So I, backing up to the, to the density, the, the project itself and each individual home has its own private yard, and we have common space. I mentioned to one of the commissioners tonight. I had a son that graduated from college, Cal Poly, last two weekends ago. I rented a fourteen-hundred-square-foot unit that had a small patio and, and a little common area. We had twenty-five guests in that unit over the weekend. Everybody was able to relax and enjoy themselves in that particular event. It's a small venue, I have a small area, but it's, it's well utilized. This is what's, is, is going on. So this idea of, you know, that, that these twenty-five-foot setbacks and twenty-five-foot rear yard, that's appropriate for an eight-thousand-square-foot lot. It's not appropriate for a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot lot. That's, that's, that, that's my point.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you may follow up. And, okay, all right, thank you.
We at least have two choices. And, and this is one choice, to do it with PD. And I think if I understand it, the PD was not your idea. You were willing to go along with it, and it was fine, but it wasn't. You would have been accepting of residential zoning. Is that correct?
A multifamily residential designation, but I, I want to be clear. The PD does allow setbacks that are not presently allowed under your current zoning. So without the PD, we would not be able to propose this, this product type.
What I'm, what I'm really curious about is, if we, if this were simply rezoned, so it was medium density and let's say twelve units to the acre, would you have the same number of units on this property?
Most likely would have more units because I would end up going to a townhome development and going right to the twelve. So twelve times the three-point-three-four acres would get us the density range that we're, you know, looking at, which would be in excess of the thirty-three units that we have in front of you tonight.
So just to summarize then, your answer is that the fact that it's PD is not increasing the density of the units?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Badami?
We hear other applicants with single-family homes wanting larger backyards. We heard one earlier tonight. So being that these are single-family homes, how big are the rear private yards for private open space for families?
On ten feet by the width, by the width of the, by the width of the lot itself. That would be the rear yards.
Okay, so for the math, is it a hundred, two hundred square feet?
Couple hundred square feet.
I'm sorry?
Couple hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seac?
I just wanted to confirm that you did not receive any specific comments from the Campbell Union School District to your EIR, positive or negative?
No negative comments, no positive comments. We did reach out to the school superintendent.
Yes, I saw that. It's listed, but you did not receive any comments from them.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Erickson?
So, thank you for all the work you've done on this. It goes back quite a ways, as you know. It's been, before it came here, it's been CDAC and a whole bunch of other kinds of things. It seems to me you've been reasonably responsive to the concerns that were addressed last time. And you presented us with a reasonably well-designed, well-planned, small lot, single-family subdivision that's trying to create a neighborhood. And you're challenging us to consider different kind of single-family product type in using a, using, because you can't accommodate what you're proposing to do with any particular zone. So you, so then you're choosing a, a planned development to accomplish that. And there's a series of except, you know, exceptions, setbacks, et cetera, you know what all those are. So we have to say, okay, why would we want to do that? So what's, what, so that's part of what we would do. So that being said, I have some questions with that context. So you have three, three basic plan types that have three different versions in them. What would you, what's the anticipated price range for each of those three plans relative, approximately? Sale price range?
Yep. The, the units will be sold in the, and I break it down to a per-square-foot, approximately five hundred dollars per square foot. And the units are twenty-one-hundred to twenty-two-hundred square feet, all, all three plans. There's not a, a great differential in the, in the square footage.
So if my math is good, that's a million, slightly over a million to a million-two, three. Is that right?
That is correct.
Something, okay. So, thanks for that information. You've used three different floor plans with three different styles for each floor plan. So there's nine different houses in. And so you, to create a, a neighborhood feel so that doesn't look like everything was the same. But when you laid them out, you chose to generally keep all, each of the three plans clustered with each other as opposed to mixing them. Did you consider mixing the three different plans throughout the, to get a different feel for the neighborhood?
We did look at that. And there's a reason that those plans fit where they fit. It's a, there's a, backing up to the concept, we, we have a Z-shaped property. So we're designing a, a project that, that fits to be in, be able to bring in the interior streets. And when you do that, you end up with X amount of land area in which to put the homes. So the homes were evaluated as far as how they best fit within that, the confines of, of the site. What I think you might be suggesting, which would be, is there an opportunity to provide a different elevation? I don't think from a standpoint of the product type that you're going to have that feel that, oh, that's a Plan One or that's a Plan Two when you're in that, when the project, because of the differentiation that we have with the elevations. But that's, that's the reason why they're like that.
So lots twenty-one and twenty, so lots twenty-one and twenty-two face, the front of them face to the parcel that's owned by El Camino Hospital. So their front faces on to that parcel, which we don't know what is developed. Is there some reason, so they're facing into something that, I, I don't know. I can't, wouldn't want to speak for El Camino Hospital, but I doubt that they bought the property to build housing there. And so is there some reason why you didn't choose because that particular plan can, could be flipped the other way? So that they would be facing into the neighborhood as opposed to into whatever El Camino Hospital or whomever eventually bought, you know, develops that property? Is there a reason why you didn't make it part of the neighborhood as opposed to have the, those people face what will probably be another development? It's a question about how I would feel if I lived there, if I'm in the neighborhood or am I facing some other development there?
I understand. Um, I understand your question. And we, we designed it from the standpoint that when the fencing will go up, which will be between ourselves and the, uh, El Camino-owned property, there will be private, private area created there. So we don't really look at it as from the standpoint of somebody just facing out to the El Camino site. It's, 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 it was done with that particular intent in mind that they, they would have their own private area.
So you, you judge it better to have them face, the front, my front door, if I own that house, to face a fence than to face my neighbors and my neighbors?
That's the way we had looked at it.
Okay, that's fine. Um, if, if, so my next question, am I okay still? Cut me off anytime you want to, Chair Smith. Okay. Because I'm about 60% of the way there with questions. Okay, so, um, I, my sense is you did a great job with the Capri streetscape. I worry about the Knowles streetscape. And I'm trying to imagine what it looks like when that area is fully developed. And, um, and, uh, so you chose again to have, and, and you chose to have Lot 33, the house on that, face to Knowles, which by, by character is a through street, much more so than Capri is. So it's less of a residential. And the houses that are, the single-family dwellings that are across Knowles from this and along Knowles there, all have very significant setbacks. And most of them have gates with, with significant setbacks. So you chose to pull this up. And so I was trying to imagine living there. Um, and so again, it wasn't clear why you didn't turn that into the neighborhood. That's a, a piece of the question. And then with respect to the streetscape, it looks like, uh, I, I wondered why you couldn't figure out if you put some kind of a, an architectural landscaping feature, as Mr. Cannon suggested, at the end of that auto court, if there would be a way to develop something that was coherent from the house that's Lot, whatever it is, the one that's facing, the one that's, uh, what would that be, west of that auto court? Now, now it's, it looks like there's three different, there's three different feels as I'm looking at that streetscape. So I'm, I'm trying to imagine what it would look like from the corner of Capri all the way down to Dardenelli, if you would. And, and then that little space as opposed to it saying to me that it's a residential thing with some kind of coherence. There, it feels like to me there, there are three different elements there in a very smart, small space where there's already going to be, you know, multiple elements between Capri and Dardenelli because of the different kind of developments there. So I was wondering if there's some way that you could make that feel like it was more coherent. And if it would be better to reverse the house on Lot 33 to get a better streetscape that would be, would look and feel better over the long haul?
Commissioner Erickson, I, I believe there's an opportunity to, to look at Lot 33 and whether or not we want to reverse and, 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 and orient the, the front door of the home to the interior of the, of the project. We purposely have it coming out to the street and you're not looking at a garage door, but you're looking at a front entryway in a nice landscape area. But that is an area that could be looked at, uh, and considered. And I would like to, you know, interface with the Dalton Group as far as whether or not that, that makes sense. If I'm trying to understand what your comment is. We were not trying to back up to, to, to Knowles, but if that's not an issue for the commission, we're happy to, to look at that.
I mean, my, my, my concern about that is if I think about that stretch from Dardenelli to Capri, I have one, one, single-family home that's facing in the middle as opposed, which, which will be a completely different feel than the stretch of homes on Capri or what would, or even the stretch of homes that are on, there's other kind of development that'll be there.
Right.
So I wonder, I, I'm not an architect, I'm not trying to design from here, but it just, I wonder what it will feel like ultimately.
Sure. I appreciate that. And, and just not that we're going backwards, but originally you had four homes that were fronting out there. And with the reduction, that's when we end up with one.
Yeah, I understand. Um, in the private street or drive, I guess you referred to as a drive. That's okay. Could be a court, could be a drive, could be a lane. Um, are you, are you anticipating putting any particular kind of pave, what kind of paving, I guess, or let me ask you?
Well, we do have, and we're, we're showing it. And it was a comment that, uh, Mr. Cannon made of whether or not we'd introduce some decorative pavement. And we do show decorative pavement in not only the intersection areas, but along the private drive, especially along the west, um, westerly side of the, of the project. So we think that's a, a nice feature. It provides additional walkability of the, of the project versus just an asphalt surface.
Because you haven't accommodated sidewalks in there, so you need to slow the traffic down.
That's correct.
Okay. In one of the detailing, one of the trims was, was a use of high-density foam as opposed to wood trim around some of the windows. Can you, high-density foam is generally discouraged in the Residential Design Guidelines of the Town. So help me understand what that looks like.
I can. The high-density foam that's available today allows for a very smooth, troweled finish on, on the trim itself versus a heavy, uh, knock-down dash stucco finish that you see on some, um, um, product today. That's not a, a, a style that, that I'm comfortable with. And we'd like to go with that, that, that dense foam allows the opportunity for that to be really, so you see the detailing of, of the, of the foam detail in, in versus the, the material that would just be shot with a, with a, with a stucco. So that's why we're, we're showing it that way. And, um, the Dalton Group has provided a lot of additional detailing with cornice and, and, um, materials that will help those, those elevations.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Tercini, I'm going to take a turn now, but I'm only going to take a summary turn, okay, to be sure that I have captured what you and the, um, engineer and architect have said. If I understand correctly, you are willing to address and change additional items per Mr. Cannon's letter of June 20th, 2014. And, and specifically, um, to upgrade the fence to the satisfaction of staff and the consulting architect. And I'm just going to go through these. Um, the windows material to the staff's and consulting architect's satisfaction. And, um, we are now talking about reorienting the front doors and/or the structure itself of lots 21, 22, and 33, as I understand the comments that came from the podium and the commissioners. Am I correct with that?
You are correct with respect to Lot 33 on the reorientation of the home. I'm reluctant to, at the diocese here, design the, the product for the reorientation of the front door because if we do that, we have, we're impacting two other units immediately there. What I would suggest is we will, um, definitely review that with the town staff and consulting architect, if that makes sense and provides for a better integration of the homes, very much so. We're open to that. So I don't want to say I'm not prepared to do that. To clarify, we are prepared to, to look at that. But when I'm looking at the site plan right here this evening, um, I see more, asking for more questions and any interest.
Well, that's why I just wanted to clarify where we are here. All right. So everyone, oh, Commissioner Birch, yes?
I haven't had a turn yet. I'll go really quickly as I possibly can. Um, you do have three different styles, each with three different elevations. However, as I've gone through, you clearly state which one is Plan One, Two, or Three, but I don't know which is which elevation. Do you have a, we clearly don't have a full set of drawings. Um, do you have that that shows which elevation is where?
We do. And I apologize if you didn't get the full set of, of drawings, but we do go through that. That's something that's important for us to make sure that we're not duplicating an elevation and, and, and have the opportunity to.
I don't think I have that drawing.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Okay, so, um, but again, see, that shows me Plan One, Two, and Three. But within that, I can't see that. Does it say if it's elevation A, B, or C of Plan One?
It does. On the right-hand column of the, of the chart, it shows the, the, the planned elevations.
Okay, so just arbitrarily, let's pick the ones on the far left, the red, Plan One. Which is which? Is that A, B? Does it go A, B, C, A, B? How, how are you configuring those?
Lot number 30.
I can't see that. I'm so sorry.
Let's start off with Lot number 32. Lot number 32 is a Plan One and it's a B elevation. Lot number 31 is a Plan One with an A elevation. And Lot number 30 is a Plan One with a C elevation. So that's how we differentiate those.
What's 29? Keep going.
Yeah, no problem. 29 is Plan One, A elevation. 28, Plan One, B elevation. 27, Plan One, C elevation. 26, Plan One, B elevation. 25, Plan One, A elevation.
Okay. Okay. So you've broken the pattern up a little bit. Um, well, I'm just curious. You have seen them where they just go one, two, three. Um, as I was looking through these, one of the, the things I wish that you had, would have provided, um, on some of your elevations, there's a large stone presence. Um, I think for myself, reviewing this, just, um, let's get past the density and the traffic and the parking, I would have an easier time approving if there was a sample or something of that, if I had a, something that I could see that would tell me what that is. Because that is a large stone face that even though, um, you know, they're mixed up in there, these units are tight together and right on the street. That is going to be a large looming presence. Um, so I wish you would have brought a sample.
I appreciate that comment. And, and I would, uh, wish I would have brought a, a sample. We, we, there's many ways we can go with, with the stone. Mr. Cannon suggested that we introduce additional stone to, to the elevation. And so we had less on the prior elevations and now we're showing more stone. And we're trying to address sort of the continuity and the real Tuscan style. So I believe we can work with, with staff to provide the, the type of stone that we are going to propose and really look at the, the amount of stone material that is ultimately decided on for those elevations. I'm not locked to having too much. I, I agree with your, with your comment.
Okay. Then I have one last one and I'll be done. What? Oh, wait, Joel has something.
I would just offer that this is all great conversation. Um, and we can continue along that line, but the architectural site applications are coming back to the Planning Commission for approval. So should the PD get approved, we'll have, you'll kind of have another shot at these kinds of details.
Okay.
But I think for now, it's probably good input for the applicant so that they know moving forward, should the council take an action, then might save them for the architectural site, um, being able to try to address some of these as you go through them.
Do you guys mind if I ask one more question? It is going to be a little bit more specific to the architecture. Usually when people are building a two-story home and it's adjacent to another two-story home, privacy becomes an issue. And I was looking at the floor plans. And again, I'll just looking at Type One, you've got a master bedroom looking right into a bathroom, a hall looking right into a laundry, and your windows are all, you know, equal in height. They're very consistent. I would hope as you look at the architectural style, that you would look at changing that for privacy's sake. Your homes are right next to each other. And I think that for a family with children, I know that I would personally be very uncomfortable with that. And I think that it would be an issue down the road. So as you do look at the architectural styling, I would like for privacy to be a consideration.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner, tell us for a quick, all right.
I just wanted a clarification. It's on your, um, letter received June 9th, Exhibit 22. Um, and it's about detail to the project revision R. And it's halfway down the page. It says, increase the private open space from 16% to 20%. This area along the common open space provides blob, 1.3 acres and 40% landscape coverage. Are you, when you refer to private open space, are you referring to what?
I'm referring to the private yards themselves. And so what happens with the, with-
Of the homes.
Of the individual homes, yes.
Thank you. So that's, that's a 4% coverage.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell, and then, then we're going to be complete. All right.
And I probably should have known the answer. I just don't. Uh, one of the required findings, if, if this were to pass, is the community benefit. And I honestly forget what the proposed community benefit is.
I think it's, uh, the, the primary community benefit is adding the, the needed housing for the community to address, uh, the housing needs for the, for the Bay Area. So I believe ABAG has, uh, direction to the individual communities as far as providing their fair share of housing. And I think the community benefit is, this is an opportunity to provide that housing in an area that has, uh, you know, least amount of impact to, to schools and to, you know, the overall, you know, traffic in, in the area. And so I think that's a primary benefit.
Sounds like I didn't miss something. There was nothing in the papers about what the community benefit is.
Right. But there's one other comment that you did, maybe didn't take a look at and which we did propose. The Los Gattis Creek Trail is, has an area right where we take the access off of Knowles that is, that washes out continually. And what we are proposing as a community benefit is to work with the town engineers to see if there's an opportunity for us to assist in that, uh, repair, whether or not it's civil engineering, whether or not we're going to be off hauling a certain amount of dirt off this site. And there might be an opportunity for us to, to work together to try to provide that benefit. So that was an area that we had identified specifically that could be a community benefit.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
All right. Uh, Mr. Tercini, we have appreciated all of your comments and your knowledge this evening. And so, um, there are no other questions. And so we're going to ask you to have a seat.
Thank you.
And I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing. There are no other speakers. And I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they have, um, questions, want to comment, or want to introduce a motion for consideration by the commission. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll make a motion and see if we can get a second and have some discussion. Um, I would move that we recommend to the town council approval, uh, that, uh, we also deal with the following items, that we certify, or that the, that the EIR be certified as shown in Exhibit One, that the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, which is shown as Exhibit Four be approved, that the proposed residential land use will require the town council resolution 2011-063 be amended or rescinded, see Exhibit Seven, uh, that the required finding for community benefit as just most recently discussed by the applicant, which I'm not going to repeat, but it's to deal with flooding, uh, would be approved, that the required, uh, finding for consistency with the general plan in Exhibit Five, uh, would be also approved. The required finding for the general plan amendment from public to office professional, which is Exhibit Five. I'm confused by that. Uh, I'll come back to that. Uh, hmm. Uh, that the, the planned development application, PD 13002, Exhibit 24, uh, be approved. Now, I'm confused on Six and Seven. Uh, Six being required finding for the general plan amendment from public to, public to office professional, Exhibit Five, and adoption of the resolution for the general plan amendment application, GP 13001, Exhibit 10. And I realize I'm making the motion, but if it's, if the chair would entertain some clarification from staff on those two points, I would be grateful.
So shall we, uh, table the motion for a moment and ask then the staff to clarify those issues? So Commissioner O'Donnell, we, um, we'll be back to you.
So I would offer that, it goes way back-
So, I would offer that, it goes way back to the previous report, but you have to find that the general plan amendment is internally consistent with the existing goals and policies of the general plan and its corresponding elements, so that's 6. And then 7, the council through the general plan amendment will adopt the resolution. So you're making a recommendation on the resolution that it is internally consistent and that you're approving the general plan amendment.
As explained, I would complete the motion as I previously stated as 6 and 7, which I've already stated. So that is the motion.
Thank you, and do we have a second? Commissioner Erickson.
I'll second the motion.
All right, and then I would ask both the maker of the motion and the secondor about the, adding the specific requirements that I talked about with Mr. Tercini previously that he did in fact agree to.
I would add that to my motion.
Commissioner Erickson as well. Do I need to repeat those for the purpose of the motion?
You do not, you can just say as previously disclosed.
As previously, right, we do have it on the record. All right, so is there any further discussion? Commissioner Bondami?
I won't be able to support the motion. I don't find that this meets the purpose of a plan development. There's no site characteristics to warrant alternative development. I don't consider a flat zigzag lot composed of two parcels fronting two different streets as a valid argument. There's limited open space due to density and bypassing our zoning requirements and design guidelines for single-family residential. I don't see good design. Noise is an excess of standards. You've got nine-foot walls mitigating noise, which should be 14 feet tall to meet our long-term goals. To me, that's an indication that this is an inappropriate site for single-family residential. I find no reason to rescind Town Resolution 2011-063, formalized as recently as September 19th of 2011. The optimum quantity component for a PD is met for the applicant and not the town and it does not look and feel like Los Gatos.
Thank you, Commissioner Birch.
I also will not be able to support the motion. I have a lot of concerns about the density and in particular, a lot of concerns about the open space. I do not feel that this is a neighborhood compatible for single families. I don't feel that there is space for a family to gather. I don't think comparisons to someone graduating college is comparable to a family with children and birthday parties. And what I see is that children will be spilling onto streetways to do their recreational activities. I don't feel that the look and the character of the neighborhood is in keeping with Los Gatos, so I will not be able to support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Talisfor.
Thank you. My two commissioners have said a lot of what I feel, but my expectation in sending this back with direction was that there would be a reduction in density. The square footage living space of the homes was reduced when the third floor came off. Thank you, I appreciate that you did that. But what was missing was the reduction of the density, which we asked for, which would have increased open space throughout the development and on the individual site lots, which is frankly extremely important. I don't consider the 4% that you went up from 16 to 20 at all meeting a quality of life that we look for here in Los Gatos. If I, just to talk about the density, the footprint that you came to us with in the beginning was 47, 853 square feet of, you know, building structures. And then the reduction was 45 feet. I don't consider that a real effort in what our direction to you was. So, my expectation was not met. And as far as the architecture, although we're not looking at that, I would really pay attention to what looks like Los Gatos and there's, frankly, the architecture is void of the kind of detail we look for, both in materials and in just design detail. I think the circulation and the auto courts, there are six dead-end streets and they're narrow and the backing up of cars out of the houses, I'm just fearful, I mean, that's just not the kind of design I would look for here. I think the additional parking spaces on Capri is frivolous and almost irresponsible to me. I could never, I actually, when I went over there to look at the development, I parked on Capri and there were already cars parked there. So those, to me, are not guest parking. That's street parking, if you're lucky. You know, a PD is a tool that can grant exceptions and it's in exchange for excellence in design. But what I see here are residences negatively impacting the open space and ignoring the community benefit and the quality of life that I happen to look for based on our residential design guidelines, our infill policy, and our plan development policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Talisfor. All right, Commissioner Seac.
I'm not going to repeat a lot of what has been said. I think it was clear from the previous meeting that a zone change strictly to residential was, in my opinion, the route to move forward. But understanding that this is a recommendation to the council, what I would like, what I think would be helpful as it moves to the next step is, is a comparison of what are the pros and cons of going to a plan development versus a strict residential zone change. And yes, there's a discussion of reduced setbacks, but what is, what is it that you would benefit or the community would benefit if we were able to do a plan development in exchange for a reduced setback? And in theory, we get more open space, we get more optimal design, but that was not clearly laid out to me in this application. Another thing in terms of community benefit, I appreciate the improvements that you suggested to the trail, but having used that segment of Winchester and Capri and all that significantly, to get from your parcel to the trail is in itself a dangerous mode. And so I would spend more time looking at the community benefit of actually connecting your parcel to the trail rather than improving the trail itself. Those are my comments and I hope that is quite, I hope it's more helpful and constructive. Thanks.
All right, then we are ready for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And opposed? The motion then fails, four to three. And Mr. Paulson, what is the next step here?
Need another motion? So, correct.
Commissioner Bondami, you're about to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny, based on the finding that the zone change is not consistent with the general plan and that the general plan amendment is not consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and its elements for the reasons stated during our discussion.
And is there a second? Commissioner Birch?
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? And opposed? Four to three. Mr. Paulson, is there now a third step?
So this is a recommendation, so we'll move forward to the council with a recommendation of denial on the vote that was taken this evening. And then they will obviously get verbatim minutes of both meetings, so they'll have a transcript of all of your comments and then between this decision and the council's next available agenda, then I'm sure the applicant will work to try to accommodate some of those items in moving forward.
Thank you. We are now moving on to council, pardon me? Yes, item 4, thank you. The report from the Director of Community Development, Ms. Pervetti, you're going to speak with us this evening?
Yes, thank you and good evening. I'd like to share with you what the council's actions were on June 16th, our last meeting of the fiscal year. First of all, they did consider a modification to the resolution regarding our consulting architect and I have copies of the modification for each of you for your review. The important change is that it removed the three findings that you've been very familiar with over the past few years and really acknowledged that the consulting architect is just that. They are consultant to the town, to the town council and to you as planning commissioners. So you have the updated resolution, we have shared this with our consulting architect. We will continue to use those services because they are beneficial to the town and for your decision-making. That was one of the key strategic goals that the council had set forth and they've now completed it. In addition, they also.
Ms. Pervetti, may I just ask you a question about that?
Certainly.
Then is, what I understand, if I'm looking at number D now, is that we may continue a matter and request that Mr. Cannon himself be present at the next scheduled meeting for the matter?
That is correct.
And that is a major change, correct?
Yes, that's right.
All right, thank you.
That's right. And you'll notice as you read it carefully that some of the language is more, is more open in terms of the town may consider different factors, so you can in fact invite the consulting architect to assist and that would.
The applicant pays.
Yeah, through the chair, it would be the applicant, so we would need to, as a cost recovery organization, we would need to pass those costs along. And including, you know, travel, so that way he can get it on his schedule, et cetera. So there may be some more logistical issues for us to work through, but we would do that in as timely manners as possible. The second item I wanted to let you know is that the council did approve the conditional use permit for the inn of Los Gatos for the, for the high-quality restaurant. They did make some modifications to the conditions and they, importantly, they thought that it would be best not to do a one-year review of this use permit, but I imagine that we'll be watching this one very carefully to make sure they are meeting all of the conditions. So, the deliberation and discussion that you had was shared with the town council and it aided them significantly in their decision-making, so thank you. In addition, the council also passed for publication the electric vehicle ordinance and again, they, for the most part, agreed with your recommendation. They did not modify the internal combustion engine zoning districts for sales. There was some discussion about that here at planning commission and the second reading for that ordinance will be heard in early August, so that one is moving forward. And then I neglected to inform the commission that at the June 2nd meeting, the council did clarify the requirements for a quorum. This really, our planning commission thankfully has all seats filled, so a quorum is the majority of all filled seats, but for those commissions where we have had vacancies, this has been a little bit of an issue. So we wanted to just share this with you for your future reference as the town council is considering resolutions that affect the planning commission. And this concludes my report and staff's available if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pervetti. Do we have any commission matters? And I believe we do have one that is, that the July 9th meeting will not take place.
That is correct, Madam Chair. We are recommending the cancellation of the July 9th meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is July 23rd.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Is that agenda already set on July 23rd?
No, staff is still working through that agenda.
All right, thank you. I believe that concludes the meeting. The meeting is adjourned.